We have no public comments tonight and no recognitions tonight, so we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. Do you have anything to add before I ask for approval consent agenda?
Just one note that there is an acceptance of a donation. This is from the Menucha Women's Club for $40,000 to support our staff professional development, to support positive engaging learning environment. So we're going to use this, these funds to support our Safe and Civil Schools program throughout the upcoming years.
Thank you so much for that. With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
And can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. First action item is 4.01, the approval of publication of the 2024-2025 budget in tentative form and setting the public hearing for September 16th, 2024. Mrs. Robinson.
Hello, Erin is going to get me a clicker maybe? Okay. So this, this is just the same slide deck that we saw last month. There hasn't been any major changes, so I was just going to go over a few things. Just the recap that we did approve the budget, last year's budget with a $650,000 operating surplus. So I'm going to skip ahead. This is the July update. So a few things have happened since last month. I had told the board last month that we were waiting on our final tax payment. We did receive those final distributions from Will County and Kendall County. So I had $4.5 million budgeted. We did receive 5 million. So this isn't above and beyond what we were expecting. It's just the timing. So we're looking at fund balance as of June 30th, and this came the last week of June. So it's funds that we knew we were going to receive. We just received them, you know, a few days earlier. So where in Will County and Kendall County, your first tax bill is due prior to July, and then the second one is done after. We assume around a 50%. And you can see here, Kendall County, a little more extreme. We ended with 57% of it. So I've gone ahead and updated the budget to reflect that then next, our next budget that we're looking at this year will receive the balance of the difference of that. So you know, you'll see the 43% and the, what is that, 47%? So, and then that's how I'm going to budget moving forward. So around COVID and during the pandemic, things just, there wasn't less, a stable tax collection because different counties did, they gave taxpayers some time. They broke up the tax payments. So we haven't really seen the last few years, but now I looked back at last year and this year, and this was what was normal. So I'm going to, moving forward, this is what the percentages I'm going to use. And then the other thing that we talked about last month was interest on our investments, and we ended up near $2 million. So I went ahead in this year's budget, and I budgeted 1.3 million. I talked to the board a little bit last month about that. So what I did is I took some of our working cash, and I invested that out into the next 25, 26 school year. If the board, if any of you want to look at the specifics of that, always attach to the treasures report. The second page is always a list of all of our investments. And then that lists maturity date. So if you scroll all the way down, you could see near the end, there's about $8 million that's invested more than a year out, and it will show you the interest that we're going to earn. So that's why I'm not going ahead and budgeting another 2 million. I'm just doing 1.3 because I know some of that's going to mature the next year. And then the last thing, which actually came total surprise, so our state payments. For as long as I can remember, the state has always been slightly behind. So what happens is I budget one prior year payment and three current year payments. And even back, let's say maybe 10 years ago, there was a time that we would only budget one prior year and two current year because they were so, so behind. But they've been catching up, but there was never any discussion that I heard about that they were going to actually catch up this year. And then the last week of June, we not only, we had already received our one prior and three this year, but we received our fourth final, or our fourth payment of the current year. So that was completely unexpected. So now I've updated the budget for next year to be four current payments. And so a payment to us is around $450,000. So we just have to hope that the state stays on time and current with payments. I can only assume that they're going to at this point because they have caught everything up. So that's what we're going to go with.
So well, the first three payments, so are they, were they at the regular time then?
Yeah, like so they're quarter, they're quarter, yeah, no, they're quarterly.
For the first three, then the fourth would be?
So what, the way that the state system works is a payment is voucherd, and so you see it on the quarters and it goes, and then you might get the payment a week later, or sometimes it sits there. Well, that fourth payment was always voucherd in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, but we just never received it. And then this year, we just got it that last week of June. So everything else throughout the year, nothing gave me the idea that it was going to be different this year. And I don't think anyone really knew until right before it happened.
So forgive me, I'm learning about this as we go. So what's the downside then looking forward to continuing as it was? Because we have historical data that it's like that, and this is kind of a newer, first time that you know of on time. Would it affect anything if it went back, even though we budgeted for four, and it went back to how it always has been? Would that affect you in any way? Or is it going to be, it would be fine either way? Or what's the downside to just continuing as, as assuming poor?
Yeah, no, if I, so if I, I obviously could assume that we'll only get three and just assume that they'll get behind again, and that would be the more conservative safe bet. But that would impact, that would be a $450,000 hit to our budget. Go ahead.
No, so I guess the final, the recap to my question is if we assume they're on time now, and for some reason they're not, that wouldn't really, we would be able to make that up in a way. We wouldn't feel that necessarily. We're confident that that wouldn't throw the budget off too much, is what I'm getting at.
If they get behind again and we miss the payment, we would be $450,000 for next year's budget. That would be, so unless we approve a budget with a $450,000 surplus, no, that, that would impact us. Again, it's a timing thing. We would end up getting it the next year. But if you are, if you were looking at June 30th fund balance, no, that we wouldn't have that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to fully get, thank you.
Yeah.
So you have a lot of confidence that?
In the state of Illinois.
We have one year that they did it. And I mean, I'm kind of with Adam. I don't know
Yeah.
If doing it all force, then you're going to get it.
And I can, I can look, like, over the summer, I'm sure, I think it caught everybody off guard. So I'm sure there'll be a lot of conversation about it. And I, you know, I can, I can bet that people will be throwing around, okay, what are you guys going to do for next year's budget? And I can kind of see what the consensus is. And then we can always change it. This is just the tentative budget. So as of right now, it's in there.
All right, cool.
So this, this is just review. I did not change anything. I kept all of our revenue assumptions the same. Like what I said, I did that 1.3 million in interest. And then this is one of the big unknowns still, our evidence-based funding. I still, in this tentative budget, I still have $500,000 of new evidence-based funding estimated, but we haven't gotten that yet. So that's one of the things that over the, hopefully over the next month, we'll get that finalized. And we will get, this is the form that we get from the state when that comes out. And then the grants have all been updated. On the expenditure side, everything was pretty much finalized last time, so nothing there has changed. The other main unknown to me would be the Grundy County Special Education tuition. We always have a meeting sometime in the summer, and that just hasn't happened yet when they, because we need to give them time to close up their year and then finalize the numbers for next year. So Dr. Staub and myself and Rachel will sit down with them, and they'll give us some final numbers. So that before the board approves a budget. Those are typically the things that I come back to you next month and say, oh, I had to tweak that. So that could happen. And then I still have the contingency in the budget. Large projects, if you didn't see, Mr. Weisong has included in his board report, just an update of where we're at in the projects. We can talk more about that, but those have all been included in the budget. And then this is our new summary. It looks very similar to what you saw last month. We're still at an operating surplus of this 248,000, and then the overall operating surplus of 666, which is the bottom number right there. You can see that some of the funds are, do have a deficit, and so that's when we get that evidence-based funding. If it were to come in more than 500, that's where I would start to play around with the funds and disperse it amongst those to even, 500 is, it's less than what we've got in the last few years. So I would be surprised if it was less. It's been anywhere from between six to a million. So, and then we can, I can, it, it can go into any fund we'd like. And then this is just the summary. And so again, the, we'll present a balanced budget that with fund balance of 25%, the way that the budget is currently presented, we would end with a fund balance of around 60%. So we're much higher than what our minimum policy says. And then this is the July 15th meeting. So we're bringing the tentative budget, and we are setting the budget hearing for September 16th. That would just be part of, that's our regularly scheduled board meeting. We would do it right at the beginning. We'd have the hearing. And then I will go ahead and put the notice of that public hearing in the newspaper in early August.
And by the September 16th, you'll have the question marks today. Most of them you think would have.
I would hope that I'll have the answers to those things in August. So at the August board meeting, so that then there's no question by September. And then even by September, you know, let's say we had late enrollments and we added a teacher, or, you know, like, we'll have definitely a lot more concrete by September, so.
Other questions for Mrs. Robinson. Again, I know I speak for the board. We really appreciate how you lay this out. It makes it so easy to follow it through time and just kind of see the differences. So greatly appreciated on that. If there's no more questions, I need a motion to approve the publication of the 2024-2025 budget in tentative form and set the public hearing for September 16th, 2024.
So move.
I'll second.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we're moving on to 4.02, approval of administrator multi-year contracts.
Sure. Action item 4.02, approval of administrator multi-year contracts is at the board's request. We had two administrators' contracts that we had reviewed. We pulled comparative data from local districts internal and reviewed that, and that is what we're presenting to you tonight for Dr. Staub and Mrs. Robinson.
I'll make a motion to approve administrator multi-year contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Shaneberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Next one, we are moving on to 5.01 is board updates. As, as is evident tonight, we have our first meeting with Superintendent Kinder. I know that she has been working very hard throughout, not only her official start, but even the weeks leading into that. We are very grateful for the time you put in to really jump off the start of your tenure here on a very well-informed and involved foot. So we are very excited for the future here in Menucha 201. Also wanted to just remind board members that it was in last month, I did have a couple of questions between the last week and now about our meeting dates. Those were all in the last agenda approved, and so those are all listed online. Just make sure you have those in your calendars, as there are some holidays that fall on our usually scheduled Mondays. Any other board updates?
I wanted to mention, I know you were just speaking about Mrs. Kinder, and I think that we haven't had a chance in an open meeting to say, we all put a lot of time as board members into this, this process. But in front of the many people that are here, and anyone listening, I wanted to let President Conquest know that the time we put in, it's obvious you put in much more time through this process, and really, really got us to an outcome that is going to benefit everybody. So thank you for all the, the time and energy you put into it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other board topics? Okay, we will move on to administrative reports.
Okay, we have a little bit lighter agenda of administrative reports, but we'll go ahead and speak to a few of those this evening. I know we wanted to make sure we hit buildings and grounds, and if there's any other things that you have questions on the, on the reports that are attached, we're happy to speak to those as well. Mr. Weisong, Director of Facilities.
Just, okay, how's everybody doing tonight? I put a list of things here for everybody to look at, but I could run through them pretty quick. Regarding the asphalt work that has been completed as of today at all sites, we do have a couple of sites that need striping, but outside of that, pretty much everything is done with the asphalt projects. The sign at Junior High, there was a little bit of adjustment on the bricklayer coming out to complete his end of the work. The sign is up. We have brickwork to be done and stone, and then we have the electric to hook up to it. The bricklayer said he would be out on Thursday, and probably take him a day, day and a half to complete that side of it. The trick with the electric is we have to try to trace out where it's at, where the old one was at, and we're going to try to reuse what was there. If not, we have to run all new pipe all the way back to the, one of the light fixtures that it comes out of. But we'll figure that out once we get through it. We got to find a locator. The boardroom project is moving along. I'm meeting with them tomorrow to go over some finalization for Aaron, some of his AV stuff that needs to be put in. Got some electrical work that needs to be done. Today they came out, and I believe they had a painter on site to paint. There's some electrical work that needs to be done. The HVAC needs to be tied in piping-wise. That'll be taken care of probably by the end of this week. So the HVAC controls will follow that once they do that tie. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So will we, will be there next month? Do you think it'll be done by then?
I.
Give or take?
Possibility. Construction is kind of like box of chocolate. You never know. I mean, I'm running in some hitches here, so I don't mean to, you know, sorry about that.
Just curious.
Just trying to be honest. The, the project toward Walnut Trail with the reinstallation came in early, which was great, and came under budget a little bit too as well. So which is another good thing. The playground project came in early as well, came in right at the budget, I believe. Looks really nice. I don't know if you had a chance to go over there and take a look at it, but moving forward, it might be a benchmark to try to match other facilities because the ground space that they're using is way too much. And what they put in there should be very useful for the students. Junior High, the control project is moving right along. It's on time. I believe by the end of the week, this week, we should be done with all the new installation of the new controllers. Then after that, it'll be testing and training after that. Moving into our cleaning, we are, we are ahead of schedule here, I believe. Our custodians are working really hard, getting buildings cleaned and working around all the different things that are happening. A lot of waxing has taken place, but a lot of deep cleaning's already taken place. We're moving along. I think we're going to be right on schedule with that. The maintenance department, we've got two gentlemen outside cutting grass is basically what they do all summer. And we've also implemented them to get to the buildings, trim the bushes, trim the trees. I've kind of implemented into that, implemented that into a PM program. So they're out there at certain cycles doing that. Once they're done with that, I'm going to order some mulch and try to refresh a lot of the areas in front of the buildings and a lot of the trees in the outlier, outline areas. We're also working on the track shed. We're basically cleaning it up, and we're just using some sheeting to sheet around the open areas. We tucked in some insulation, did a little, few things with electrical. Aaron Crombie and Mike Savarino working on that. We also sent Mike Greenwood over there today to kind of inspect this. Mike Greenwood had redid the flooring at the MPC office as well. He mounted some cabinets for us in classroom 126 and removed some old boards. The Walnut Trail, we had revenue issue with ballast there. As you could see, there's several ballast. I brought an electrician in to put a, a current monitoring device on the main transfer that feeds lights to see if anything is funny that's happening there. I'm still waiting for his report on that. MIS, we're looking at changing out some lights in the library. Apparently they're, we're going to try to convert them to LED lights, so I have to look into that. Mike Greenwood, again, he just finished this the other day. He redid the flooring in the main entry at MES in the door one coming in. We turned, took out the carpeting, put VCT in, and then we put LVT right into the main office. We're in the process of painting that room as well for them, and hopefully by next year, we'll be able to go through the rest of the offices and do the same thing. The other project we're working on is the Buildings and Grounds Office. Mike, Mike Greenwood's a big part of framing all that. The middle of this week, I have the fire company coming in to move the fire panel and add more devices, things like that, as well as the electricians are coming in tomorrow to start the roughing process with that. All the PMs were completed for June and July. We have a lot of PMs coming in August, the first two weeks for to get into all the classrooms and do all the UN events. That'll start the first week of August. Any questions?
Are you confident we'll have everything ready, done by school opening?
Yes.
It sounds like everything's on trail, but do you foresee any?
As long as you don't have nights like we had yesterday. Today was kind of a rough day. We had a lot of problems with the electrical tripping things and fire system had a problem over Jones. I was there all day today, pretty much trying to get that corrected so we can get air handlers back on, so we can get the cooling on for the kids that are there. And I don't think we got that started till like 1:00 today. That's how long it took. So outside of that, barring no unforeseen things, I think we're going to be good.
Great job. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, other administrative reports. I know Mrs. Robinson covered a lot, so there's additional detail provided there. Dr. Staub, did you have reports tonight?
All right. I wanted to start off by thanking the Menucha Women's Club. You guys approved a donation made by them that is going to support some of our professional development, specifically in the area of the Safe and Civil Schools. So we're very excited and appreciate their ongoing support of our initiatives within the district. Today was the first day of Menucha Bridge, which is the bridging from the last class into the new, their new age level for next year. So our students started that today. We're very excited to have that started, and thank you to our program coordinators, the staff that are working the Summer Bridge program, and especially thank you to technology, as without all of them working together, we wouldn't have those programs. So we really appreciate everybody's efforts there. I'll have more details for you guys with finalized numbers coming in August, kind of giving you a summary of how all of the programs went. And then there, I just wanted to draw your attention, in the board docs, there is details of the grants. I know that Ms. Robinson put information into her presentation, but there is full detail of each of the grants that we receive, and what the focus is for, what we utilize the funding for, our allotments for this year compared to what we had for the initial allotment from the prior year. And then I did not put in the additional allotment from last year, just because we're never quite sure what that additional allotment will look like. We do have each of those initial allotments, but we do always anticipate some additional allotments to come. And then any questions?
Okay. All right. Any other administrative reports? All right. Well, I'll try to keep mine brief. I just have a few notes that I want to share. I'm two weeks in, and I'm certainly up and running thanks to the incredible support of the district team and the board. So I greatly appreciate that. I've gotten a warm welcome, great reception, and I'm very grateful for that. I also want to thank the board for the, taking the time to sit down with me one-on-one. Appreciate your insight, your input, and I'll take that into all of the other input information that I'm gathering. I'll have an update and a summary of how that's going in August for you. It's clear that the board truly sees the value in working together as a team of eight, and values that strong governance and leadership. And so I'm appreciative of that. And on that note, President Conquest and I had a virtual meeting with our Illinois Association of School Board Field Service rep last week, and we were discussing the Starting Right Workshop that we have scheduled for September 24th. So that is a great opportunity, and I think that just speaks to our shared efforts to start off with a very strong foundation around communication roles, expectations of the board, that the board has of me, and that we have of ourselves as a team. So that is critical for us to do the work for our kids and our families, staff, and community. So I'll be continuing my outreach with our leaders and with our community leaders, union leaders, district partners throughout the next several weeks, and our team. As you can see, there's so much going on in July. People often ask, well, what do you do in the month of July? We do a whole lot. So our maintenance report was a great example of that, and all of the leaders sitting in this room, and many, many others who are supporting them. We are in the thick of back-to-school planning with administrator, new staff meetings, Institute Day, and when we welcome all staff back on August 12th, and we welcome all students back on August 14th. And speaking of back-to-school, we have about 444 families who have not yet completed registration. So an email and a text went out to them. Thank you to Mr. Souza and his technology support. We need you to complete registration on Power School as soon as possible. And so also keep an eye out on social media following our district and our schools for the important back-to-school dates that are coming up. Find Your Way Day at the Intermediate and Junior High on August 7, and our Open House at our Elementary, Intermediate, and Junior High Schools on August 12. So keep an eye out for those dates. And I don't want to mention the countdown of dates because maybe the kids don't want to hear it, but it's 30 days from today until that first day of school. So that could seem like a really long time if you're a parent, or that could seem like a really short time, but still plenty of summer to enjoy. We'll also be sharing information out about community engagement. I will be hosting several meet and greet opportunities at different locations, including on August 12th, which is the same day as our Open House, and on September 5th, which is the same day as our Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. So that information will be shared and communicated so that we can get people out. I'm looking forward to meeting as many families and staff and students as I possibly can in the early weeks of school. In the area of finance and operations, thank you to Mrs. Robinson for all of her hard work on the tentative budget. She's been also getting me up to speed. And in addition to the tentative budget development, we've, have a meeting on the books in early August to review district debt and discuss future planning. We'll be reviewing facilities and long-term facilities planning with Mr. Weisong, and we'll be working, we're currently working with District 111 on interviewing and hiring our new Director of Transportation. So first round of interviews was held. We have another second round of interviews later this week, and hopefully we'll identify a very capable and qualified candidate for that very important aspect of district operations. And just a couple additional highlights. At the end of June, we hosted a reunification training at the Intermediate School in partnership with Grundy and Kendall Regional Office of Education. District building leaders, Police Department representatives, and our SSO reps took part in this training. We will be, Dr. Massey and I will be meeting with our lead SSO in the upcoming weeks to review our crisis response plan and key safety and security initiatives prior to the upcoming year. And we'll be planning our district safety committee meeting, which as soon as we have that date set, we'll be reaching out to our agency partners to make sure that they're at the table with us, reviewing our emergency plans, and continuing that strong partnership that 201 has with our partners to keep our schools and communities safe. So we are looking forward to welcoming our students and staff back to the new school year, just 30 days away, like I said. Still lots of summer left to enjoy, so stay cool and definitely keep an eye on the weather and stay safe.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Staub, 440 families, is that normal, that many, you know, 30 days out? I mean, do we know?
I actually was just sharing with Ms. Kinder how we have a habit in our district of families registering late. So yes, it's always an initiative of us to try to get families to register earlier in the summer. So that's, that is pretty typical.
So the 440, though, is that like a normal number, 30 days out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we would love to have more families register. So yes, if we can use this as a commercial for parents to please register your children for school.
I think once they realize that that meet and greet is coming up, and also our kindergarten meet and greets are scheduled on different dates for each building. I think when those dates start looming, then I think people really start to take notice. It's on their to-do list.
Second question, Transportation Director, is, are we, are we looking outside, or are we look, are we looking to, is anybody inside looking?
We have interviewed and screened internal and external candidates, yes.
Do we send the registration? I know the email goes out. Do the parents get a text too?
Yes.
Yes, both.
And they're even personalized? And they're even personalized?
I know they're personalized. I have seen a copy, but I wasn't sure if texts went out too or not. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, next to preliminary staffing class size outlook.
Hello, everyone. That was a nice transition for me. I'm bringing forward to you the numbers as of the, thank you, Erin, you're going to drive? Cool, all right, Erin's driving. So this is a redo of what I brought to you guys last month with updated numbers here in our current list. You can see the difference for year to year, but also the cohort difference. If you can continue, Mr. Souza. This looks wonky up top, not when I looked at it on my slideshow, so just go with me. This is a comparison from June to July. So what I wanted you guys to see was specifically at this Oxable, our enrollment has gone up a little bit. You see in the kindergarten, they've increased six students. And the others are just a little toggle here, there, one student. Not a significant change to their overall population, but their numbers are still looking good because as I told Mrs. Kinder, green is good. Yellow is caution, red is bad. So we're in the green through Oxable in each of the grade levels. This was the information I brought to you guys last month about licensed staff. And then I created the support staff so that you could see, stay there for a second, Erin. You can see the breakdown of who we have in the buildings as far as the support personnel are concerned. And Oxable has 35 and a half folks that are designated to their building in support personnel capacity. Jones enrollment, same slide, looks a little updated. Keep going, Mr. Souza, doing great. Here's our June to July comparison. And you'll see they've had an influx of seven students at kindergarten. That first grade's still looking a little high, but it's within range. We're not concerned about that. Mr. Heiser and I have been in communication. He's keeping an eye on it as well and has some, if we continue to grow, he's got some potential solutions in mind and how to manage those numbers. But right now, we're comfortable with everything that's sitting there at Jones.
All right, so just, so I'm not confused.
Yes, sir.
440 families that haven't registered, are they in this?
I, we, I asked that same question, Mr. Cronin. They're included in these numbers because we're expecting them to come back.
Yep.
Yeah, we don't want that surprise there. Unless they've told us they're not coming back, they're included.
Right.
And the 440 families, we know that somebody, I have one child, two child, three children.
I believe that's the student count. Yeah, that's the student count. So that could be one family with three children.
So roll into the next slide then. I've got licensed staff from Jones, and then their support personnel is the next slide. Remember, Oxable had 35 and a half, so Jones makes sense. They have, you know, a population similar to Oxable. They have the same level of support there as well. Menucha Elementary enrollment, if you keep scrolling, Mr. Souza. Their June to July, I want to note one change that we did make here. So we, we noticed that their kindergarten numbers were pretty high, and we weren't comfortable with that. So I worked with Mrs. Regeri, and we swung a section from third grade up to kindergarten. And that kept our numbers in a, in a good place. And I'll tell you, the third grade average of 23 and a half, that's pretty across the board, almost exactly to what the other buildings have for their third grade. We feel more confident and comfortable putting a larger class size in front of a third-grade teacher than we do a kindergarten teacher, obviously. So that toggle of one, one personnel up to or down to kindergarten from third grade felt like the right move to make because her numbers continue to, to go up each day I check it.
So, can I ask you a question? On the Menucha Elementary, the color-coded slide, I believe that's one, one up, or, yeah. That includes the families we were just talking about that have not fulfilled the registration but were here last year? Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're, the, the 33, for third grade, the 33 people less than, is that from last year or is?
Yeah, so that 23, 24, those are the kiddos that are now fourth graders, that 125.
Yeah.
So the class below them is just a smaller class.
Okay.
So it's a 33-student drop from last year, but that cohort, as you can see, these numbers aren't that off in the cohort differential.
So that's really the, the information to ask my actual question. I don't want to push you all the way back up to Jones. But what that means is that the kindergarten class then is 35 students smaller now?
Yes.
That's a huge difference. That seems like a very large difference.
We've discussed the overall impact that that could have on us if that trend continues. But as Dr. Mann reminded us, you know, as we traversed through COVID, the pattern that we saw where that families were maybe keeping their students out in kindergarten first grade and then pushing them back in when they get to those upper elementary levels. And we're seeing that continuing as a trend as well. So I, I think it's something to keep an eye on for sure, but it's definitely on Mrs. Kinder's radar because we talked about it in when we were running the numbers here and reviewing them, so. Absolutely. Advance, Mr. Souza. See the difference here? Ooh, too far, buddy. Pretty static here. Kindergarten, a little bit of a, again, we made that toggle, that looks good. So we're pleased with the numbers. But her building sizes is fairly similar to what it was last year as well. So, next slide, sir, and you can go the following slide, support personnel, 32 and a half. So she's got, you know, just a smaller population, a little bit fewer folks. Next building is Walnut Trails. Their numbers again, overall cohort difference, not looking that, that far off. Go to Walnut Trails enrollment comparison. Sarah's numbers, again, kindergarten has grown a little bit, everybody else is pretty static. And then her overall support personnel, 32 and a half as well. Menucha Intermediate and the Junior High, their numbers haven't changed much this summer. I did note, because I'm neurotic, I checked again today, and I was like, ooh, I want to tell them about it. But they've gone up like two students here, one student there, and then they'll drop a student. And, but they've been pretty consistent throughout at about 930 and about 1015, 1016. So definitely a dip from previous enrollments that we've seen in each of those buildings. Their overall numbers, this is, gives you an idea, but it's not fully accurate, I'll be honest with you, because you pull students out for MTSS, they receive some other services, and those numbers of class averages are typically lower than what you'll see on the board here.
And how are we doing space-wise? We're, we're actually going down a little bit, so is it opening up some more rooms or space or?
You know, kinda. So what we've done, remember, we've added some staff. So we've found places for them, but we are, we're good. When we go to add a staff member, one of the questions we say to the principal that comes when we have this conversation in the, in the spring is where are you going to put that person? So I see the vision, I see what you want to do, where are you going to put that person? And what benefit is that person going to have to the overall population? So we always make sure before we hire somebody, we've got a spot for them. Got a little tricky with behavior specialists and occupational therapists trying to find spots for them and spaces that would be appropriate, but we definitely have spaces for everybody. You know, we've accounted for that, and we don't have any concerns. Dr. Staub, I saw you were, I didn't know if you wanted to add.
With the addition of the self-contained classrooms, we had to really explore because we needed an extra classroom or two for those in each buildings. So we met with the building principals throughout last winter and the spring to talk about what might that look like. Dr. Heiser went down a classroom size at Jones, so we were able to utilize that for the, the behavior specialists are going to have a home there. And then our occupational therapist, we found a home for them. We found homes for each of the self-contained classrooms. So yes, we're, we're good on classroom sizes right now.
Continuing on then, we have the licensed staff, the support staff at MIS. They've got more students, so they have more support staff. So they had 49. The junior high enrollment, again, it's pretty static. You've got a couple students here and there. And if you advance to the next support personnel slide, you'll see that they have 47. And you'll notice like one thing that stood out to me, and then I was like, oh, that makes sense. They have three nurses here. MIS has two nurses. Well, the reason they have three nurses here is because we have a student that has a one-to-one nurse that's now at the junior high. If you looked at last year's allocation, that nurse would have been three nurses at MIS, two at the junior high. So that's a little anomaly there, if you noticed that.
Do we need a lunchroom monitor?
No, and I'll tell you why. From a, from a former junior high principal, I'll tell you, we used to have them. And frankly, the students, what we found and what we believe to be true, and I think Ms. McCarroll will shake her head behind me in affirmation, the students at that grade, at the grade levels, listen better to people that they see every day in the classroom. So whether it's our campus monitors that they see every day in the hallway or our classroom teachers that go in and push in and do lunchroom duty, we have fewer behavior issues when we have those types of supervisors as opposed to lunchroom monitors at the junior high. So it's been goodness, probably 10 years ago, if not longer, that we removed lunchroom monitors from the junior high because they just, it wasn't a good fit. Lovely mothers that were coming in and doing it, but it was a tour of duty that none of them wanted to sign back up for either, so.
What's the difference with the campus monitor then?
Yeah, so the campus monitors at the junior high, they utilize them to patrol the hallways, check the doors, help the SSOs out. But they also use them in the lunchroom to make sure that the, the student behavior is appropriate, the flow and go of traffic, you know, and just, that's where the population is concentrated the most. So they use those campus monitors who have great relationships with the kids already, and, and they use them in that capacity. And then when, when lunch is over, they're back to flowing and going throughout the building and.
So the students see their faces all day long as a, so lunch monitor is just that 30-minute period or 40-minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely. So MPC, again, they've crept up a handful of kids. I think they're up to 36 now and 169. So their numbers are, as I said, they'll grow as the summer goes on. And then as those kiddos turn old enough to be able to qualify for MPC, you know, we'll, we'll get more and more, and those numbers will blossom into the school year even. Licensed staff at MPC, they've got a smaller population. So if you go to the support personnel, Erin, we've got 26 support folks there. Most of those are program assistants working in the classrooms because we, you know, we keep those numbers pretty adult-heavy in those classrooms. And then overall enrollment, again, we had, from last time I presented to you guys till now, we had quite a few folks that responded, so our enrollment did change. But we're hoping that the pleas this evening have tugged at the heartstrings and gotten more, more folks to respond by the time I come to you next month as well. But again, our cohort differential is just at 12 students from last year, so. And then, Erin, continue please. Overall, building-level support staff, there's the breakdown total. We've got about 259 folks, give or take. I did not include bus drivers and bus aides because we'll be talking about those folks as we start negotiations. And we are begging, borrowing, stealing as many as we can this summer, getting them trained and having them ready for us at the start of the school year. I know we have a couple folks that have already taken the test and that are practicing the driving. And so we've had a busy summer getting folks qualified so that they can join our force. So I'll bring those numbers to you when we get closer to the start of the school year. And then there is, the weird of district office has some folks, and transportation has some folks that aren't really accounted for in the licensed or the support personnel. So I just wanted to throw a slide in there to give you an idea of how many folks we got just kind of hanging out there in an odd little group that doesn't fit into any square hole, round peg kind of situation. And that's it. So I'll keep an eye on the enrollment, obviously. Bring that to you guys again next month. But from the previous month to now, we've, we've definitely knocked those numbers down from what we were looking at last, last month.
So my, my question, I know Ms. McCarroll's here as well, so it's nice to have you at a, a meeting in your full capacity. And between curriculum and class size, it seems like these are the things where we can, what we're offering our students. And my, my question really relates to that number at Jones, that 23. Compared to the other first grades, it can be six, I think, seven higher than some of the other first grades. So what is kind of the number in a sense? Maybe not a specific number, but you said that's to be watched. What, what would be considered too much then versus, because if we had one or two more at Jones, and you have eight or 10 more kids in one class than another just down the, the road. So it seems like, that's like you said, I know you are watching it because you said so, but what, what would be something where we'd have to kind of make an adjustment?
So we've arbitrarily, honestly, set some, some guidelines of numbers that we find acceptable. And 23 is that green, so a max of 23 in that K to 2 band. And then as you get a little older, we allow those bands to expand. So we're there. You know, we're definitely not as high as we were at one point, things were, when things were crazy. But, you know, Dr. Heiser and my conversation is, we get to a tipping point in the summer as well where when I call a teacher and I say, hey, I'm going to flip you to a different grade level, there's some fallout there. In addition, you know, you've got to kind of weigh the pros and the cons of, do we pull that now? Are some of those 444 going to be from that group? And they drop down and it's only 106? And then the average looks a little different, you know? So there's still some unknowns out there. I would say, is there an impact to the overall education of the students in the first grade in comparison to a class average of 18? No, because, you know, we, we have proven historically that those are acceptable numbers, and you can get through, you can teach the curriculum at a pace that's appropriate. And should behaviors become an issue, you know, we can add support personnel and work with Dr. Staub through the lens of, of the student services as well to, to provide those supports that might be necessary moving through the year if in fact that proves to be a little challenging, but.
And I think you, you mentioned it, I would, I should have mentioned in my, my question that I would defer to the building folks as, you know, they know their students. So they might know with these group of students, this is a good number versus a different group of students might need to be at a different number perhaps.
Bingo.
Obviously, I would defer to the folks in the building. But it, it did strike as an anomaly that that is a lot, a lot different than some of the other ones. But I don't know if that's a norm or if that's just kind of this year, so.
Well, that's a.
Just that you're aware of it.
Absolutely, that's a question I posed to Dr. Heiser. You know, this collective group of students, you know, how, how are they behaviorally? How are they academically? Additionally, the group of teachers that are working with that particular group of, of students, you know? You talk about if you have a bunch of new teachers that are at that grade level with higher. So we, we engaged in those conversations for sure. His, his comment to me was, I'm comfortable where it's at right now, but I want to keep an eye on it with you. And we've got a couple of spit-balled ideas about how to fix it if the numbers continue to change. That's been static all summer though. So he was comfortable at the end of the year when I, I showed it to him. And we're just, again, keeping an eye on it to see if it fluctuates to where he's not comfortable any longer, and then we'll, we'll enact one of our plans.
And I'm sorry, you might have mentioned it, I was doing math in my head while you were talking at the end, honestly. So are there, besides transportation and bus drivers, are there positions we have not filled that we're, we're needing to, or are we in a good spot?
We still have some vacancies. Just this morning, I woke up to a resignation from a special education teacher. So things are going to continue to happen throughout the summer. One of the things I'm going to do, because we're getting late into the summer, especially for some of those specialty positions, like a special education position. Dr. Staub and I spoke today about, you know, getting it out there, advertising, what else can we do? You know, there's, we have time to fill them for sure, but we're getting to a point where a resignation today puts us in a bit of a pickle. But, you know, we always find a way to make it work, and we've got, again, I go back to, I've got all kinds of plans.
I feel like I asked you all the questions, so thank you.
No, you're good, thank you.
So I know in years past, we've had some challenges with candidates out there. I mean, is this year, are they looking, is there, are there more potential out there?
I feel like the pool of candidates that we've gotten in the last year or so has been greater than, like, we took a hit in COVID. There just weren't, there weren't people applying like we were used to, you know? Back when I was a baby administrator, we'd get hundreds of people applying for our positions. And I think universally, those numbers have dwindled, and we've seen that impact here as well. I would say it's fair to say that we are starting to see more candidates applying for our positions. And I think honestly, part of that is due to, you know, like our collective bargaining agreement. We raised some of the wage, or, you know, some of the salaries. And people, you know, we used to be a place that people came to because we, we paid a good wage. We had good students, we had a good, strong school system. And I think we're starting to get back to there and words getting back out. I also think there are more candidates that went into education because there for a while, there was a bit of a drought. So we're seeing a little bit of an uptick, which is nice, and, and we hope that trend continues. We're also getting a little more creative with some of our postings. You know, Mrs. Robinson, with, with the support personnel, we're posting on Indeed and some other sites that we've not typically used. The Director of Transportation position, actually, we don't post it necessarily, the high school does, but they posted on Indeed, and every single one of the external candidates came from that site. So, you know, we've switched our mindset a little bit as well, which I think we needed to do. You know, the kids are doing different things now than they did 15, 20 years ago when they're looking for jobs, when they're coming out of college. So we're really trying to seek partnerships with universities, reach out to them when graduation hits, previous to graduation, and seeing if they have, you know, who do you have? Let's, let us reach out to them, or you put our posting on your bulletin board, you know? So we're trying to get creative and draw them in, and, and we're seeing some numbers go up in the pools.
So in my career, all the companies I worked for had a referral program, you know, 500 bucks, 200 bucks. Do we have that? Like if a, if a, if a 201 employee refers somebody, would we pay a bonus or?
We don't have anything like that in place now. I believe at one point, Mary, correct me if I'm mistaken, we had something for transportation. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's the only time we've utilized something like that in our district. I, I, I will speculate that we went away from it because it wasn't fruitful in its production. But we don't have. but we don't have anything else in place like that.
And just to offer like a regional view, I think we are in an excellent position, comparatively speaking, with having, being fully staffed and not having that high number of vacancies. I mean, there's, there's school districts in our immediate area who have dozens or hundreds of openings right now. So I think we're in very, very good shape, and we just, you know, adjust as any openings come up.
I think we have 15 or 16 openings, only two of which, if I'm not mistaken, are teaching positions. And that's, we see that some of those Support Personnel positions, we fill closer to the school year, because it's not traditional to hire somebody in June and then be like, hey, we're going to put you to work in August and give you a paycheck then too. So we fill those a little more when the school year comes closer. So we're not, we're actually very happy with the numbers that we have right now.
We did, I, I want to point out, because we were not able to locate two school psychologists, we did need to contract out for those services. And that's something that we will honestly be searching for the entire year next year for the following year, so we can try to fill those school psychologist positions.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Any reason for closed session? Okay, anything else from the board? All right, if not, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.